Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Yes, hello. Nice to have a wonderful sunny day after so many days of gray, huh? Oh, when am I gonna put that in there? Also, dish them. What? Warrant?
Mayor, I'm showing seven o'clock straight up. Right now you have four councilors. Looks like Counselor Whitney, who told me she was gonna be here at the WAC, and Counselor Kenyon.
Okay. All right, thanks, Brian. All right, let's get this meeting started then. On June 18th, 2020, 7 o'clock PM, the Oak Ridge City Council regular meeting held by remote session as well as a few of us in person. Welcome, everybody, and good evening. Can we start by saying our Pledge of Allegiance in the privacy of our own screens? Brian, will you start us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate that. Jackie, will you do a roll call for us?
Yes. Mayor Holston. Counselor McCollum.
Here.
Counselor Whitney. Counselor Forecombe.
Counselor Forecombe is excused. He's not able to attend.
Okay. Counselor Maxfield.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
Yay.
Counselor Hollitt.
Here.
I think I saw Counselor Whitney just join.
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, Bobby.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, that constitutes a quorum. Thank you, Jackie. Um, let's see. Just reminder, everybody, if you don't have your computers or your phone on mute, please do so. It creates a lot of feedback loop. And let's ask for additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda. I have a few. 10.1.3 is the addition of discussion on, or 10.1.3 is the TRT request that came from, from Den Mountain Echo that we're gonna take back up again. 10.6.1 is, is the addition of a right-of-way discussion. I would also like to add the addition, additionally, under council business, discussion of a TSP work session and the upcoming TSB meeting that council would be having on the 16th, I believe. And also, I would like to add an addition of the city administrator evaluation. Just a brief discussion about that, an explanation of the documents you received, again, to the business of the city council. Are there any objections to that or any other additions? Okay. Giving everyone a chance to unmute if we need to see them. We'll move on into public comments. Just remind everybody, those that are at the WAC, of course, you can have public comment. Those of you who are on screen, I am kind of looking, so give me a wave if you wanted to say something and unmute yourself so that we can hear you. So public comment is open. Trudy, I see a finger up. Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you well.
Okay, I was wondering, I have a question about the agenda item. Oh, where'd it go? I just had it. 10.1.1 citizen requests. The, if you could cover the process when it comes to that and what lean that that's regarding to.
Yes.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, the other question was, were you able to reach Secretary Kaden?
I actually left a message with his office.
Okay.
I can hear that, but I am gonna follow up with him again so that I can talk with him in person.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome, Trudy.
Yeah, definitely unmute.
Are there any other citizens who would like to make public comment?
We have some citizens at the WAC mayor.
All right.
First, or you wanna?
Yeah, Lord Hope, 48319 First Street, Oak Ridge. At the last council meeting, I heard Counselor Hollitt mention that there was a committee member and she went on. I didn't quite get everything she was saying.
A little closer.
Okay, didn't quite get everything she was saying, but evidently had to do with committees and what have you. I'm on the administrative committee and at present, we have two citizens on that committee. I, I have heard that we are lacking 12 members for committees. Three that resigned would be 15. I know in the future, there could be three more, which would be 18. And I've heard also, there would be two others that may resign in other committees, and that would reach us up to 20. This to me is very, very, you know, concerning. Vacancies. Are citizens showing that they have disinterest? I have directly asked many people, would you come to serve on a committee? And I've heard remarks of, I'm not gonna deal with that, Shinola. And to, no, I don't trust council. I have one or two interested bodies, and depending on what they feel depends on how they will, you know, either submit or not. It is, to me, this, this isn't, this isn't fake book. This is real. This is something that I believe council owes to the citizens to get them involved in committees and work harmoniously with the committees and the committees' points of reference. That's about, that's about all I have to say, except I do appreciate the fact that Tricia was on the administrative committee. I appreciated that very much, and I wish her all the luck in her new pursuit of her master's degree. So that's about it.
Is there anyone else there, Brian, that wants to make a comment?
Yes, ma'am. Randy Riley.
Randy, would you rather, would you rather make comment when we bring up your agenda item?
Yeah, we can do that. I just wanna make sure you know I was here to most to do.
Okay, good. Glad you're here. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to make comment?
Yes, ma'am. No, ma'am, not hit the wire.
Okay, is there anybody else tuned in? Dan Barkley, I see that you're there. Can you make sure that you mute your, mute your screen? There you go, unless, of course, you wanted to make a comment. So seeing no others, we will move on. Thank you. So we're gonna move on to mayor's comments, number six, announcements and proclamations. I have a few things. I just want to remind council that we have our retreat days set up for July 18th and July 25th. Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's gonna be at the Nazarene Church?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so make sure that those are held on your, on your calendars. Let's see, check these out, make sure I get this. Also, there is, I think, councilors, you all got an email. I wanted to remind you about it. Oops, sorry. Hold on, I don't know how to make this go away, but I'll give it a try. Hold on. It won't start. Okay, I got it. See, Lauren, you could've been talking all this time. That was your end-up timer. Okay, so the local elected officials sessions on, on police work. You received an email from Chief Martin, I think, or maybe the city administrator. Those sessions are on the 23rd and the 24th. Make sure you register if you're interested in them. Professional standards, basic police training, and use of force training. So let's get those put on your calendar also. And a reminder, July 2nd, we have no meeting. So with that, let's move on to council comments or announcements. Councilors, do you have anything that you'd like to, like to share?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, please, Tricia.
Yeah, I just wanted to share with the council that I resigned from the admin committee. I let them know at our last committee meeting and just wanted to give you guys that information as well. Unfortunately, I just don't have the bandwidth to carry on with that committee.
Thank you for letting us know, and thank you for all the hard work that you've put into there. I appreciate it. It's exciting to see you move on to some broader horizons. Also a little scary, I'm a little impressed. But any other councilors have comments? All right. Don, oh, I see you. There you are. Okay. So let's move on into, into our consent agenda, and I don't think we have anything for consent agenda this time, so we'll move away from that into the business of the city council. I would like to suggest that council, that council do a work session prior to our TSP meeting that is a public hearing on the 16th for the purpose of just reacquainting ourselves with what is going on and also having a healthy discussion with one another as to what the, what our options are, what some of our alternatives are. And just give us a little more time than we'd have in a council meeting. If we did this, I would like to invite someone from ODOT to come and sit and be present for questioning. So I'll open that up for, for council discussion. How do you feel about that?
Kathy.
Yes, Dawn.
Would it cost us more money to have ODOT come again because they actually charged us for the last time they came?
Good question. Brian, I don't know the answer to that.
I'll defer to Rick on that one.
Yeah, I don't know that ODOT charged us. I do know that Kittleson is only being paid for one more meeting, and we were hoping to hold that for the TSP hearing itself.
Okay, so Kittleson would charge us. We could ask ODOT for a representative?
Yes, yeah, I'm sure they would be happy to send a representative.
Okay, okay, that sounds great.
Or Zoom if that's what you decided.
Oh, true. That's true. We could do that, too. So any other, how do you feel about that? Don, having asked the question.
Um, well, I wanna point out, now that Rick mentioned that, I think it was Kittleson that charged, not ODOT, so.
Yeah, that's, that's what he said. Yeah, so how do you feel about having a work session for this purpose, or do you think we can just accomplish it during a, a, our normal council meeting and public hearing?
I personally don't think it's necessary, but.
Okay.
Whatever the council thinks.
Council, I'd love to hear how you feel about this. It is something that I just thought might be help, an opportunity to have a healthy, some more healthy conversation about it and maybe figure out alternatives or, or a direction, but if that's not amenable, so.
Here we go. Audio.
So I see we just got joined by someone called Dirty Little Gnome, and there you go, you're muted. Awesome, thank you. So I would like to poll the council, you know, this is just, if you don't think it's necessary, I'm fine with that, too. I just wanted to throw it out there for everyone.
I don't know that I necessarily need a work session, but I do have additional questions that I would like to have answered.
So we need to make sure then that we build into our time, enough time to really have some good questions and answers that you'd wanna do, and would you be prepared to make a decision based on the answers that you've got right then?
Um, yes.
Okay.
But I think a couple of them might need a little bit of research, so.
Okay, so perhaps you could share those questions with the city administrator so that we could get some answers, and those could also be shared with council prior? How do you feel? Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, I'm gonna poll all the council here. So Tricia, how do you feel?
I'm good with whatever everyone else wants to do. I think that we could do it in that same meeting.
Okay. John, how do you feel?
I feel the same way. I, I'm open to, if people think there need more discussion and whatnot, but I just fear that if we don't do something like that beforehand, that we'll go over during a regular session. That would be my only.
Okay, I think we could probably anticipate that we will go over somewhat, although we can try to, perhaps we can start at six instead of seven. That way, we won't go too late into the evening.
Yeah, I think that would be a good alternative is to mark off some extra time, knowing that it's going to be a longer discussion.
Okay, all right. So it sounds like, as far as council, we would prefer probably to, oh, Chrissy, I didn't ask you.
Though, I, I'm okay with either. I like the idea of a work session, so the topic is just that because I do think that the TSP discussions tend to be very lengthy and extensive. But I'm also okay with having it during a regular council meeting if it's a light agenda. My only concern is public comment. I, I know traditionally, work sessions are not for public comment, and I would be concerned that the public wouldn't be able, we wouldn't have as much public interaction. And I think that that is what council is lacking on this. We need more input from the citizens. I know that there's a lot of dialogue on social media, and that doesn't always make it to the council room. And somehow, we need to pull those people in, both negative and positive, for the TSP and really here, get people to come to the council meeting and talk to us.
And then let's talk, it sounds like we're, we're all pretty satisfied with going ahead. I hear voices. Dan, were you trying to say something? Okay, please mute. Okay, please mute, mute your phone. Thank you. So it sounds like council would like to just handle this in our regular, regular meeting that we're going to have, making sure that we have enough time. So I would propose that we're going to start this meeting at six. Also that we'll have this meeting at the WAC in the same manner that the planning commission had their meeting yesterday, day before, whatever it was. How does, or is council okay with that? John, you said, is that a yes?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Don, John, Bobby, Chrissy. Okay, so.
Did this meet in council chambers or the gymnasium?
Gymnasium, like just as the planning commission did the other night.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't watch that or, so I have no idea.
Okay, well, they were well spaced at tables, six feet apart, and I couldn't tell where the audience was. I tuned in for just a little bit and tuned back out to see how the microphones were working since we have a new set of microphones. So, yeah, so we'll go ahead and set it up that way. That will be kind of our first in-person meeting since this has started.
So Kathy, we will be doing it by Zoom and the WAC, correct?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Because I'd prefer to do Zoom. And some citizens might also want to do Zoom, but how much room is there for citizens if they decide to come?
I'll leave that up to Brian to answer because he was in there. I wasn't.
We were kind of targeting 45, but if, if they, by the, by the rules, we could get up to 62.
So I think there's plenty of space in the, in the gym to accommodate if citizens wanted to come as well as, and recognizing that this public hearing, there'll be time for public comment, both written, both Zoom, both in person. But then public comment will close and there will be no further public comment and we'll go into the public hearing. So, yes, Trudy, masks will be mandatory. I see your question. Okay, so I think we'll set that aside then. And the second thing is, is I believe Brian sent you all out an email about the CA evaluation process. Counselor Kenyon and Counselor McClelland and myself have worked on this, put together a process, actually plagiarized a process from Forest Grove, which was very well done. Talked to them on the phone and they were eager to share it with us. And, and so we went through, Don was gracious enough to go through and tweak it so that it reflected Oak Ridge and not Forest Grove and put in the, the right numbers and dates and all that type of thing. So it is available to you both online on the Google Drive as well as a packet in your, in your shelf at the, at City Hall. I just wanted to point out to you a couple of different, different things so that as you look at it, what I'd like to do is just have you spend the time to look at it until our next meeting and then we will talk about adopting it or asking questions about it and adopting it. What this lays out is a process that includes self-evaluation from the city administrator. It includes the possibility, if they choose, input from individuals who direct report to our city administrator, which will go directly to our city attorney and will be held anonymously summarized and then given to each council member to look at. We'll be able to sit down with the city administrator and those evaluations to, to discuss them. We have an evaluation form that we fill out, which will be turned into, into the mayor, into myself. That evaluation form, all of the evaluation forms will be reviewed by the mayor and the council president. We'll look at them and do some tallying because there is the ability to see how many, to indicate how many people chose what level of competency for each area. And also to summarize everyone's notes that are in it. We will turn that and give that to the council, present them with the evaluation. We'll have an opportunity to discuss that either in public or in executive session and that is up to the city administrator. And, and then we will move forward to adopt that evaluation. Evaluation processes in, is tied to a compensation package. We have a little bit different of an, of a method right now because we've done our budget. We have a line item compensation we've agreed on per contract, but we can talk about that. So if you have any questions as you look through this material, please feel free to reach out to Don or to John or to myself for explanation about what is there or any questions that you may have prior to our next meeting when we can actually discuss it in full. So thank you, Don and John, for your work on this. I really appreciate it. And I think it's a good step toward codifying some of the, some of the things that we need to do, like evaluations. So first steps and good steps. Thank you. Moving on from there.
You have a hand raised, Counselor Hollitt.
Counselor Hollitt, yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I actually raised that earlier when we were pulling for the work session and I forgot to take it down. I'll take it down.
No problem. I will get back on the view where I should actually see hands. I'm taking it off. There, now I can see it. So if you raise your hand and I don't see it, please just, you know, speak up. I'm, I'm juggling two or three different screens here to see if you can catch up everybody.
Okay, so let's move on then into business from the city administration. 10.1, city fair update. Brian?
A few open remarks first. We are going to open the playground at Salmon Creek Park in accordance with the revised Phase II guidance from the Oregon Health. They, you can keep it open and it has to be cleaned twice a day. So the public works folks will be coming by and spraying that with the COVID material, COVID killing material. And we also will have some posting to do of signs. I encourage you to tell citizens to bring their own hand sanitizing if they can, but the bathrooms will be open. There'll be soap available there. And just be sure to exercise physical distancing with their, try to, with their children while they're at the playground and perhaps consider using off-peak times for the playground.
Brian, can I ask a question about that? I noticed there are some other communities that are opening and just posting signs saying, you know, we clean these once a day and please use it your own risk. Is that, is that something that we could do rather than have to clean them twice a day?
I would prefer to clean them twice a day just for the citizen's health and it is reimbursable through the CARES Act right now. As soon as that dries up, I'm sure I'll be, have a different story. I would prefer to kind of do it, do it twice a day.
Okay. Thank you. That's good.
Next, Bill Jones and I today sat down or zoomed down with the auditors, did a preliminary meeting and went through some basics, questions by them and then set up the schedule for their, for their audit visit, whether it be Zoom or in person. They prefer to do it in person, but right now it looks like September 30th through August 3rd. Is that it, Bill? I think so. And you'll see their engagement letter is on the agenda tonight. Lastly, this will be the last meeting where Bill and Rick will be in full-time service with us. And I can't tell you how indebted I am to both of them for the work they've put in and for the, the way that they helped me during the process, my transition. And I miss them both terribly. So please, if you see them around, pat them on the back for the good work they've done. With that, I would like to go into 10.1.1. And that's a citizen request for lien forgiveness. Let me get through it and let me go through it for you. It's, the exhibits were the citizen's statement and the lien detail. And then I've sent out some additional things after the fact, as I did my research. The proposed council action is to consider a motion from the floor. So the issue is a citizen requesting a full or partial forgiveness of a $4,000 lien imposed for non-payment of park rental fees in 2015. The city rented the park, community building, parking in August of 2015 to Randy Dryling so he could host the Mountain Bike Oregon event in August. He also hosted one in July. Rent totaled $4,000 for the single event. And after non-payment of the city, the finance director at the time filed a request for a judgment in small claims for $4,095 on 10/1/2015. Lien was entered into Lane County Court Register on 10/15/2015. The lien also carries a post-judgment interest rate of 9% per annum. And I, Mr. Dryling presented a single-page statement, it's talking about mitigating circumstances. A lien in this order is in effect for 10 years and will expire in October 2025 unless extended. And should the council elect to forgive any lien, any or all of the lien, it's a short legal filing which must be completed by the city attorney. Fiscal impact is $4,095, collect the revenue and approximately $2,000 in interest. Your options are to make a motion to forgive all or some of the lien in interest or to not make a motion. City staff does not have a, a recommendation. We, my concern was that it was to validate whether the lien, or to determine whether the lien was valid or not. The information I have, as far as I can tell, it's valid, but, so the motion's before you. And Mr. Dryling is front and center whenever you want to give him his opportunity.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate that. So council, we have, we have the information before us in addition to two additional pieces of information that city administrators sent out to us that consisted of minutes from prior meetings. I know this is something in the past. So before we get, we get started, I just kind of want to set out some, some information. We are here, we are not here to second guess the council that happened in the past. We are here to look at the facts of what we are being presented now and look at the.
Can you hear me? Could you hear me?
I can't hear you.
You need to move a little closer, Mayor.
Well, you need to say something. I put the silly paper in front of the microphone again.
Perfect. You said silly. I hear you.
Got it. Okay, so we are not here to, to determine whether or not the council did something in the past that was right or wrong or to try to reevaluate all of the things that happened in the past. We are here to look at the present circumstances and look at the extenuating circumstances that Mr. Dryling has, is presenting to us and determine what we want to do as a city as far as forgiveness of this lien. I know there was a lot of paperwork here. I know there's a lot of history and some of us are aware of it, some of us aren't, some of us are only partially aware. So I would ask that everybody, every put on, everybody put on their, their subjective caps and let's do the best that we can with this. I think before we get started.
Start it again, Mayor. Start it again, Your Honor.
Okay, I think what's, is that better?
Yeah.
Is, I think before we ask Mr. Dryling any questions, I would open it up to council. Is there any questions that you have, given the documentation that you've seen, about the documentation or any other questions that you want to pose?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
I noticed in the document that Rand, the, the letter that Randy wrote, he mentioned that he had paid $2,400 at some point. Brian also sent us an email recently that said that the city found where he had paid $4,000. So I'm curious if both are true or if only one or the other is true.
I'll let Mr. Dryling kind of address it as well, but to my knowledge, when he wrote the statement, he was considering a 2011 events. The, the actual lien was about a 2015 events.
That's correct.
What?
The amount was 2011. I was told it was 2011. The amount we're discussing now is 2012. Both those, both those amounts were paid, one in 2011, one in 2015.
Okay, so the $4,000 in 2015 for the July event was paid?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions, councilors? Looking here.
So are you, are you looking for questions specific to the paperwork or just additional questions in general?
Any questions you have pertaining to this agenda item?
Okay, so I do have a question. When this lien was filed, I would like to know why Mr. Dryling didn't object to it in court or at least try to represent himself with it.
So, so Mayor, if I might.
Yeah, please.
Would you like Mr. Dryling to make the statement first or you want to just respond to questions first?
Well, I think Randy, if you would like to, or Mr. Dryling, if you would like to, to make a statement first. I do want to, you know, I don't want this to be too much of a, of a back and forth and interrogation. I, I hope that we're looking to get to the bottom of the facts. So Randy, would you like to just take this opportunity? Bobby, keep your question in mind.
Okay.
Explain to us why you're asking for forgiveness for this lien.
All right, well, you said you don't want to talk about the past. First, I want to thank Brian for doing this and to answer Counsel Whitney as a right question. I've been trying to resolve this for five years and basically got blown off by the past administration. I was not aware that the court date had been filed after the fact. Brian was nice enough to take his time to look this all up, but I appreciate that. Quick statement, if I may read it?
Yes, please.
Okay, this is in Garda 2015. The contract for this was signed in April 2015. The council voted in May 2015 to raise the fees. I circled whole park. Park means the whole park. If I wanted just empathy, there's a box for just empathy. If I wanted just the community building, there's a box for that. When you circle whole park, as with Brock, when he used the whole park for his bus fare, he paid a $500 fee. $4,000 was paid in July. The reason it's paid in July is fiscal year. Your fiscal year, I almost say that wrong, is July 1st to June 30th, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
So they always had me wait to pay in July, so it would be for that event's year. Based on what I paid on the contract in, off in April, it came out to $2,000 per event. The council then raised it in May after I signed the contract. I never signed another contract. I was never presented another contract. The contractor in April is the only valid contract you guys signed. That was agreement. It was $2,000 per event. And that's what I paid in full in July. That's why I was granted access for the park. You have to pay your fees in full upfront to use a park, which I did. That's where we're at here. I paid the fees that were due. It's been five years of this damaging my credit and my reputation in this town. I've lost loan because of this lien.
So Randy, can I ask you, this $4,000 then was for the first event or for your, for both events?
For both because it came out to $2,000 per event at the $500 a day rental fee that was in the April signed contract.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And do you understand why I was paying in August because of fiscal year? That's what I was asked to do?
Yes. Yes. Counselor Whitney, you had a question about why this has taken so long to come to us?
No, that, that was my question.
Please, say your question.
So I, so I was looking at the small claims affidavit and everything that was filed and I see that everything went certified mail. It looks like Mr. Dryling signed for it because his signature is there on that, on the, what I would call a green card, just certified mail green card. And so I'm just wondering why he didn't object in court and, and appeal this.
Because at the time, the city said they would negotiate with me and they never met with me, so we wouldn't have to give this boy. It's been five years and a couple administrations that promised to work with me. I don't want, if you know my history, I've given a lot to this town and I care about this town. I want to try this, work this out. I don't want to go to court. I don't want to do anything like that. And I was told we would work this out. So that's why I didn't go to court. Even after they filed, I was told we would have meaning to work this out, it would be dropped, and that never happened.
And Mr. Dryling, who, who told you this?
Time it would have been like the, the, the council at the time, the mayor told me this passed away that he really wanted to resolve this without it being dealt in court. He felt like it was a win-win. The Mountain Bike Oregon was a win-win, the community, all that stuff. You know, that's the reason you guys lost, IBO, is because of this. That's why we moved to Westford.
Randy, Randy, I will point out that Mary Hampton wasn't the mayor during this time. It was Mayor Coe, so.
All right, Jim, whoever I'm talking to. It's been five years.
Please watch your language. This is a public meeting.
What did I say, language? I don't know what I said. I'm sorry. I didn't want to ask.
It's okay. Then just, just be careful. Counselors, do you have another question?
Go ahead, Don.
I just have a couple of things I want to point out from all the minutes of the meetings that I read. It does say that in the April event, when it was, April meeting, when the event was approved or the, whatever those things are called, the, the form that gets filled out.
Yes.
It does mention in the minutes that the events for 2015 would be based on the new fee schedule. And the new fee schedule was negotiated in May, which at the minutes for May, Mr. Dryling was actually available at that meeting answering. meeting, answering questions and participating in the discussion, at which point they determined that it would be four thousand per event. Also, it appears from what Brian sent us, he did pay four thousand for the July event prior to it. And then he came, according to minutes, in August. He came to Mayor Coe just a few days before the event and asked for an extension to pay the fee for August OIBO within one month. And the council granted that for one month. So I think it's really clear that Randy was aware that it was four thousand per event. And he even asked for an extension and then still didn't have it paid on time. And that's when council had to take it to court, or the city, sorry.
I can address that. I, I asked for a meeting to discuss the fees. I never agreed to the fees. You have no contract signed for me with those fees that you guys passed after the fact.
Mr. Drelling, I think Counselor Kenyon is correct. You were present at the meeting, and in fact, you're quoted as saying you would be okay if it went up to three thousand dollars. Then they voted it to four thousand. So are there any other questions from council?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So looking at that five hundred dollars a day, and it's a two-day event, I'm just confused. Do we need to update our, our application? Or maybe I haven't seen the, the newest up-to-date application?
I rented the park for four days.
Okay.
Yeah, so it was a combination of not only the rental of the park, but the parking at the OIP. Also, fees that were added up. The fees, as far as the number they came up to, you know, I don't, I don't know, aren't in, aren't in question. It's a matter of, of how much they agreed to discount or not discount. Counselor Drelling, or Mr. Drelling believes that, that there was an agreement that there would be only half the amount of fee, evidently, because he paid four thousand and then paid no, no more. But council minutes don't reflect that. They don't seem to reflect that in any way. So we have a choice here. We have some options. Council does have the ability to forgive this and set it aside. We have the ability to do nothing to it and let it continue. It expires, I believe, Brian, you said in five years?
Yes, ma'am.
And, or we have also the ability to go through and modify it to perhaps how much is owed and subtract any accumulating interest that has been accumulating since it was originally filed and would accumulate until it was, until it was satisfied. So, given that, council?
Can I make one more comment, Kathy?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
My concern is that, that this is a pretty big deal and that we would be setting a precedence if we, if we were to forgive this lien that, you know, people can just not pay and then wait a while and get it forgiven. That's my concern.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that comment. And I would remind, I would just state that this, this came up because of a phone call that Mr. Drelling and I had, asking why he didn't get monies. And I did remind him that there was a lien against him and suggested that he go about the business of trying to, trying to either satisfy the lien or get a forgiveness for the lien, or see an attorney and just see what his options were. Because as he said, it seems to be hindering him in some ways of late. So do we have any further discussion from council? And if not, I would be willing to entertain a motion from council.
I just have a statement.
Yes, please.
When, at our council meeting with the, the funds that he was requesting, I was not aware of this lien. So that had no bearing on anything to do with my decision. I just wanted that very clear.
Okay, thank you.
And I have another comment. Well, I understand all the history, not understand all of it, but I, I believe I understand most of the history behind this, and I've read the minutes, and I've read what's been submitted. I personally do not have an issue with at least forgiving the interest. That way, at least, he's still, he still needs to pay the principal of what's there so that he is paying what he should have paid originally. Personally, I don't know how this impacts him other than on his credit and being able to apply for liens or liens for loans or anything, but I, I don't have an issue with that.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
I would just agree with Bobby. I have a really, yeah. I'm a little bit torn, and I, I have a lot of compassion in this realm, because six thousand dollars is quite a chunk of money. But at the same time, you know, our city budget, we have things that we're just trying to piece together. And, and so in many ways, I do feel like an amount is due, what, what is owed is due. But I would be also okay with forgiving that interest and, and then maybe, I don't know, pulling that interest part out of it so that he really just owes over the next five years that, that four thousand ninety-five dollars instead of it also accruing more interest.
So I believe what you're suggesting is, is to, to forgive all the interest and into the future and allow five years to pay the four thousand. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussions, council?
I would only want to forgive the interest up to date of when we file our satisfaction to court. So that's what, that's all I would want to forgive, because I would anticipate that, I mean, hopefully that he would pay the amount that he still owes.
Okay.
I could agree, get on board with that too, Bobby.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, counselor.
I move we forgive the interest only on the judgment filed against Randy Drelling. The judgment being held by Lynn County Circuit Court for the city of Oak Ridge.
And I would, okay, is, is there a second?
Second.
It was seconded by Tricia. Is there any, any comment from council?
Yes, I have comment.
Go ahead, please, counselor.
I think it's really important that we know what the dollar amount is to the interest.
I would agree with that. Perhaps Counselor Whitney would accept a friendly amendment, amendment to, to delineate exactly what the amount of the lien is that you are, that you are keeping in place.
You know, I'm, I.
Actually, what I meant was how much is, how much has accrued as far as interest? Because this has been many years, right? Five years?
Oh, yeah, it's two.
Two thousand dollars, but it changes every day, of course.
Yeah.
So I, from, so I used to work for child support, and I used to write satisfactions up for court quite often for different judgments that people owed. And there are ways you can just satisfy any interest and leave the principal there. So that's what I would suggest we do with this. That way, we don't have to try to figure out exactly what the dollar amount is. I believe there is a way to do that, and it's just a matter of checking that box on the satisfaction form. And then after Mr. Drelling pays this, what he owes, we can, we would file an additional satisfaction that says this is paid in full. So there is a way to do that.
Interest accrued as of June eighteenth, twenty twenty?
Um, yeah, we could say that.
So we want to start, so I want to understand it correctly.
We want to. We have a motion on the table, so i- if we want to amend her motion or ask her to pull it back so we can have further discussion, let's do that.
Has it been seconded already?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, then it's open for discussion.
It is open for discussion. Go for it. But let's not, I mean, let's discuss what the motion is, and do you want to change it?
I don't, can you make a friendly amendment after it's already been seconded?
Yes.
Yes.
So my question is, this, this was due in two thousand and fifteen, and it was four thousand dollars. How much interest has accrued since then? How much interest is, is on the books right now owing?
About.
Approximately two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So are you saying that we forgive the two thousand dollars and that it only be four thousand dollars due?
Yes, I believe that is what Bobby has said.
Yes, I am saying we forgive the two thousand dollars in interest, and the four thousand and ninety-five dollars is still due. And then any interest that accrues after today is due.
So if you give him another five years to pay it, making it ten years altogether, he would accrue another two thousand, well, no, he wouldn't, because he'd be slowly paying it off. Or how are we doing that? Are we just going to leave it open? You have five years to pay, or?
CPA has a, has a recommendation for wording, if you're interested.
Okay.
You simply waive.
Depending on your intent, you can either waive accrued interest as of this date, or you can waive, you can waive. To be clear, you can waive accrued interest and any future interest accruing until payment is made in full. Otherwise, not, not charge any interest essentially for the, for the matter.
And I think that's what, what I would, personally, I would prefer, prefer is to waive all accrued interest as well as any future interest. So there would be no interest on it whatsoever. It would stay at four thousand ninety-five, and that's what would be owed.
And that would be under the assumption that it's paid as agreed.
Under the assumption that it's paid as agreed, and that agreement should include, should be included in this, that the four thousand. Go ahead.
So what does paid as agreed means? Are we giving him five years to pay it, or is it due immediately, or what?
I would, I would prefer that it is due immediately, but I would be willing to look at two more years.
So you know what? I, I disagree with this.
Sorry.
This has been known for a while by Mr. Drelling. I think we're doing him a favor by erasing the interest as of today, if that's what we choose to do. And so I, I think, I think it's important to ask him to pay, you know, the four thousand ninety-five that is due, plus any additional filing fees that were added on to that debt. We're just only, I'm only agreeing to erase any interest, not everything else.
I say you all the time, you have a contract. It was in April. It doesn't matter all the discussions we have. I remember Counselor Kenyon saying Randy can afford it. He has a nice new convertible. This was personal. You have a contract, stop. You have a contract that was signed in April. It doesn't matter what we talked about. The only contract is valid for the five hundred dollar.
He's been muted.
Thank you. I agree. Thank you.
The mayor is muted as well.
Okay. All right, let's, so let's tighten this up then. So it looks like your motion, Bobby, is to forgive all accrued and further interest? Yes?
Oh, no, that was not my motion.
Okay, say it, John.
Uh, it's my motion.
Oh, go, I'm sorry. I, go ahead, Bobby.
So I'll, I'll amend. Well, you know what? I think I would like to just withdraw my motion altogether.
Okay, and let's just. Thank you. Let's just start over then.
But doesn't Tricia need to second that since who, who seconded my first motion?
It was Trish. Trish did. Trish, do you agree?
Yeah, I can unsecond.
Okay, thank you. So let's put together a motion that, that we all are agreeing with. Are we forgiving all interest accrued as well as future?
I disagree with that.
Do I?
Okay, so are we forgiving all interest up to this point, but not future?
Yes.
I don't agree.
Okay, are we going to forgive anything?
Has he made any payments at all?
No.
No.
I think it's important to show mercy, but that's just how I feel. I also grew up in poverty, so I have a lot of compassion when it comes to money. And I, I think particularly, we live in a community that has a poor population, so. I think being, forgiving of two thousand dollars is a big weight, and hopefully that will inspire Mr. Dryling to start paying on what he owes.
So Tricia, would you like to make a motion based on that?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
I move we forgive any accrued interest as of June eighteenth, twenty twenty for judgment debtor Randy Dryling on the outstanding lien held by the judgment creditor, city of Oak Ridge.
Okay, is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
That was seconded by, by John McClellan. Okay, so the motion is to forgive any accrued interest as of June eighteenth, twenty twenty on the outstanding lien held against Randy Drelling by the city of Oak Ridge. Further discussion? If no further discussion, and I'm going slowly, because I'm trying to see if I see anybody. And Jackie, will you please call for a vote?
Yes. Counselor McClellan?
Hi.
Counselor Maxfield?
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon?
Nay.
Mayor Holston?
Nay.
Counselor Whitney?
Nay.
Counselor Hollitt?
Nay.
That motion does not pass. Do counsel? I would entertain another motion if there is one to be made. Without a motion, that means that, that we let the judgment stand as is, and there is no forgiveness extended.
Okay, thank you for your time, and I will see you in court.
Counsel, let's move on to the next agenda item.
Next agenda item is ten point one point two. It's a letter of engagement for the city auditor for fiscal year nineteen and twenty audit. The exhibits, a letter of engagement, and the proposed council actions, a motion from the floor. Expect to begin the nineteen twenty audit on approximately June tenth, which she did, and to issue our reports no later than December thirty-first. Brenda Bartlett is the engagement partner and is responsible for supervising the engagement and signing the reports or authorized in another individual's assignment. It's billed hourly, not to exceed fifteen thousand three seventy-five. Your options are to make a motion to approve the letter of engagement. If you don't make a motion, we recommend option one, and the motion's before you.
Thank you, Brian. So counsel, this is the same audit, auditor that we have used before. And this is a formalization of, of what their, what their schedule is for work, timeline, and cost. So can we have a motion?
Sure.
John, go ahead.
I move we direct the city administrator to sign the letter of engagement for the SGA CPAs and consultants LLP.
There's a second?
Second.
Tricia's seconded, seconded. Thank you. Any discussion, counsel? Okay, there's no discussion. Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Hollitt?
Hi.
Counselor Whitney?
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon? Counselor Kenyon? You're muted.
Sorry, I.
Counselor Maxfield?
Hi.
Counselor McClellan?
Hi.
Mayor Holston?
Hi.
That passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Let's move on. Let's see, where are we now? Finance Director, oh, no, ten point one point three.
Yes, ma'am.
This is the TRT request. We originally had a TRT request from Mount, from Dead Mountain Echo. Go ahead, Brian. I'll let you.
Okay, this is the TRT fund request from the VME. The request is a is part of the exhibit. And looking for a motion from the floor. You you consider this on the 21st of May and asked for more information. Vicky provided the information and it was in the agenda bill, but and if you need it, I can read it, but I'll leave it otherwise. I've also put some fiscal impacts in there and the motion is before you and I'll just let you know that Vicky is here if you have any questions of her.
Oh, good.
Hi.
Hi, that's good. So, Vicky, I actually, can I have a motion or can I ask you a few questions first? Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
I wondered who was sitting back there. Hi. So this is something you've done in the past, isn't it?
Yeah, the Dead Mountain Echo has done a visitor guide except for last year.
Okay.
Every year. And we've printed 5,000 of them and held it and to the community and also business counters here in town and up on the hill, that press and junction.
Okay, and do you charge any anyone or areas for this at all or is this just done for the benefit of the of the tourism and travel here?
It's done for the benefit.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Counselors, do you have any questions you want to ask prior to making a motion? If not, go.
One more thing. This is different than the the visitor guide, the red visitor guide that the chamber did a while back. This is different than that.
Okay.
But I'm trying to make it similar to that format this time around.
Okay, and and are you working with the chamber at all or are you just going to provide this to them for?
I'm just doing it on my own.
Okay, understand.
Separate. It's always been separate.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Counsel, do you? Go ahead, Tricia.
How much do we have left in TRT?
It's it depends on how you want to calculate it. Because if you recall, some of last year's got turned into this year. So if you want to include that as is this year's expenditures, then you have very little left. You have probably less than $2,000.
Oh, yeah, what we spent so far this year plus what's been approved, we have about $500 left.
Of revenue of what we've received in revenue, however, however, you still would not exceed the allocated amount for the year.
Yeah, when it's appropriations that you allocated.
That still makes me nervous to spend money that is not fitting in account right now.
But you do have some carry. I mean, even though it's not in this year's revenue, you do have carryover leftover revenue from prior year or so. In total, you know, if you look at the two years in total, you're not overspending the revenues that you receive. But it's just because of the timing differences in recognizing revenues and expenses that so you do have. You know, you do have that situation this year where you're very you're at the limit basically of revenue. We did get in about another thousand, about another 1,200 or 1,300 dollars over what I reported to you last as TRT revenue. And we'll probably get in another, I would my my guess is in June sometime or in early July or June, we'll get in another 1,000 to 1,500 dollars. It's kind of hard to predict right now with the situation. Which we still with this item would put you a little bit, you still have a little bit more in expenditures than in revenue, but it wouldn't be very significant. And it would still be under the appropriations that you made this year for TRT, so.
So I, oh, sorry, I feel like I've asked this before and maybe the answer is just not coming to me. But with the events that we approved that had to cancel because of COVID, so for instance, the bus fare, I know that was RTMP money. What did that go back into a fund?
They're separate. They are separate. So when you ask about TRT funds, Bill is telling you about the funds in the TRT.
Probably, yes.
Well, and that's where RTMP literally stands for Rural Tourism Marketing Program. So in many ways, I feel like this would could fall under that RTMP umbrella. I realize that they're separate funds, but my my brain is just has clumped them together.
Are you suggesting a reallocation of this year's RTMP funds to cover this item perhaps?
Well, they're just so closely related. It's hard to talk about one without talking about the other.
Theoretically, we have a problem with that. I'm just tech, you know, just procedurally, is that trying to clarify that's what you're talking about?
Yeah, I would just be curious how much we have in RTMP funds versus TRT.
Yes, we should. We still have quite a bit left in RTMP funds because like you say, the projects they were allocated to are not going to take place this year because of the COVID. So, you know, in in theory, the cash is still sitting there in the bank, if you will.
Right.
Or under RTMP, most of it or much of it anyway. I couldn't give you the exact figure, but it's it's a majority of the RTMP funds.
So so it is possible, counsel, to go ahead and approve and approve this and approve it out of RTMP or half and half, half TRT and half RTMP. That would be at your discretion.
I guess my thought, a secondary thought that I have here is on the ask itself. Sending mailers out to the community, I would be curious what the intent there is, particularly because the with the RTMP or with TRT funds in general, the goal is to connect with other communities and try to bring people in. So I think that if it were me, I would like to see any mailer money that's budgeted actually go outside of the community.
Vicky would like to respond if it's available.
Yeah.
I agree with you. Before I took over the paper, Larry was, everybody knows Larry owned it first. And he would put it in the bulk mailer to the community and I I agree with you. I thought that was kind of odd because we all know about it. This time I was planning on putting it in the mail subscriptions because I have a couple hundred of those that go outside of our area. And so I was going to put it in that instead of the local bulk mail. But then also put it, give it to the campgrounds, take it to Traveling County and the other agencies that would distribute it wider than just here. That was my intent this time.
That makes more sense.
A question for you too, Vicky. Have you seen the Traveling County's one half or full page that we put out? I guess I would just be curious, the delineation, if there would be overlap between the two or kind of what would make yours stand out a little bit more?
I have not seen the new one. I had a hand in the a little bit of a hand in the map one that the Chamber put out a while back. And this, I believe, it'll it'll be 12 or 16 pages of just what's in our area. I was going to go to the Forest Service and get trail maps and and you know, instead of just a page or a couple of pages in the whole lane county thing, it was going to be 12 or 16 of just our area.
Yeah, I would be curious. Are you working with other organizations on this, like Alpine Trail Cruel Association or GOES?
I haven't yet because I'm just now starting.
No worries.
I I intend to. That's my plan.
Okay, I think that collaborative nature would be helpful just in making sure that whatever information we would be pushing out would actually be relative and and used by folks.
Um, may I ask Vicky a question?
Please go ahead, counsel.
Um, I think I've seen yours in the past and isn't it? Doesn't it have like stories about the things that can be done here in the area versus just advertisements for businesses?
Yes.
It's actually descriptive of what to do in in our area.
Yes.
Which Traveling County one is more geared towards advertising?
Yes, I went on the Forest Service website two years ago when I did it. I used most of the information that has been in there the past several years, which is descriptions of, you know, the roads and the trails and the campgrounds and stuff. But I also went on the Forest Service website and pulled out information about dispersed camping and the rules. And I added the side by sides when they became Google on city streets. I added a story about that.
Right.
And some pictures that that group took before and I was just going to try. It's been the same of for the last, I mean, not the same, but it's been similar to, you know, every year has been similar to the year before. And this year I'm trying to expand it and make it more updated.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, counsel?
No, but I have a statement.
Go ahead, counsel.
It it does seem to me like this is more into the marketing aspect of it than the, you know, development of and that it should come out of the RMPT with. I probably got it wrong.
I was actually thinking the same thing as John, but I still have a hard time wrapping my head around the differences.
Well, counsel, would you like to make a motion then? Either using what is here or modifying it to indicate that RTMP funds should be used or half and half?
Well, before we do that, is there another form or another format to that she needs to be putting into that?
She's requested this.
I understand that and just I don't want us to pass something then somebody say you she didn't fill out the right form, blah, blah, blah. And how could you have done that? Shame on you.
Counselor, we would just see a we we would just reallocate to TRT funds because there's a special process for RTMP. So you just reallocate that amount of monies to TRT.
Uh, how much is available in the RTMP?
Oh, it took my tongue, but since we had so many canceled events, there's a lots a lot of money in there.
Oh.
Am I understanding what Brian's saying is is that you would just allocate the funds out of there into the TRT to go ahead and pay for this to allow her to move forward?
No, we we would just be allocating her award from RTMP funds.
Is that correct, Brian?
Well, technically, you go through a special process to get RTMP funds that goes to the RTMP committee and gets awarded at that singular event and get approved by council. So I guess council can do whatever they want. So if you wanted to go outside the process and award another RTMP, you may do that.
Yes, and that's as I said, we can allocate it out of RTMP as a council, even though that's outside of our normal process, like you pointed out, John. And in this case. So that's entirely up to council, but I would encourage us to move forward one way or the other here.
So I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead, counsel.
I move we authorize $2,500 to be taken from the RTMP funds for the Dead Mountain Echo Guide Expansion Project. Submitted by Vicky Burns.
What writing? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Maxfield's got seconded. Any further conversation?
The one thing I just want to make sure that we're clear on is I really do not want to see that funding go to mailers in Oak Ridge. Okay.
Well, taken.
It needs to go outside the community.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
The finance director has told me that we have $17,000 in the RTMP funds.
All right, any other discussion?
I'm fine with some of it being in Oak Ridge because people come here and they're going to need to have access to those and while they're here to see what they can do. So I'm fine with some of it being here, but definitely I like the idea of the majority going outside of our area.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, too. Definitely, you know, it's okay that there's copies in Oak Ridge, but no direct mailers.
Yes, okay.
All right, Jackie, can you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Maxfield.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Whitney.
Hi.
Mayor Holston.
Hi.
Counselor McClelland.
Hi.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Vicky, for making yourself available. We appreciate it and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to Finance Director's update.
Hey. I don't want to stay up there. That's okay. You guys don't need to see me anyway. Been enough of me already. So try to brief here. And so we're approaching year end of course, and I'm doing my best to look in my crystal ball and kind of predict where we're going to come out. Predicting the cash flow and so on. We've got a couple of departments right now that are slightly over their appropriation amounts. And we've got a couple of the funds where we need to where we need to transfer from some funds to prevent cash deficits and fund deficits at year end. Those are primarily reflected in the supplemental budget that I've that we're putting in front of you tonight. Those are basically designed to take care of those issues as I know them now. So I'll kind of let those those items speak for themselves when we get into the supplemental budget. I'm hoping that that will take care of the funds we have slight, we're slightly over our appropriations amount and also resolve the cash deficits and the fund deficits, although again, crystal ball isn't always perfect, so. But it's our best, my best estimate at this point in terms of trying to take care of those items. So we can get into that when we get to the when we get to the supplemental budget. Did anyone have any questions for me about the package of materials I sent out? We could we could we can have a go or just in general with regard to the financial situation?
Um, Bill, I had a I just had a general question about when we get the reimbursements for COVID funds.
Yes.
Is that the way to say that? I'm not sure. Does that just go directly into the into the funds that we made expenditures out of to reimburse that fund specifically or does it go into the general fund?
I would I would just account for it in the general fund.
Okay.
I don't think it's once I don't think it'd be material enough to account for in the other funds. And it presents an issue there where you try to offset it against the expenses you incurred or you pick it up as as revenue. And if you're going to pick it up as revenue anyway, which would be the the norm in fund accounting, it doesn't make a lot of sense to divide it up into small, small pieces in the in the other funds.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Any other questions or things I can answer? All right, thank you.
Well, before you say, before you go away and we don't see your face, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate what you've done for us and your willingness to work work long hours and I see you in there all the time. And your expertise has been invaluable in putting us up on the right spot. So thank you very much.
Okay, you're very welcome.
Thank you, Bill.
I agree. It's hard to see you go, Bill. We really appreciate you, though, during some of the hardest times.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
I'll see you out there on the trail, maybe.
Hope you're poker.
Keep them in line, Don. All right, let's move on. Where are we? Finance Police Department update.
Chief, are you in?
Yeah, do you hear me now?
Hi, Chief.
How are you guys all doing tonight?
Yeah, doing good.
I'm here and Officer Davidson is also here to speak about the use of force part. I don't have an actual report tonight. I'll do that in the that second meeting in July. Update is Officer Miller is going to actually get to go back to the academy finally. That'll leave us a little short staffed, but she will get to go back. I believe it's July 6th is her first day back. They've got a bunch of rules and I got to jump through a bunch of hoops, but they're going to go get to go back and finish. So he she was about a month in of 16 weeks academy, so she has 11, 12 weeks left, depending on how the holidays run as well because they take time off. For whatever reason, sometimes they take the whole week off if there's a holiday day at the academy. So we hope to have her back in October as a completed the academy and back to us. So I'll go right into the use of force presentation. The question was given, I believe, by Counselor Maxfield of how we know we're not using excessive force. And it's up to answer that question, we have to give you a little history and background, first of all. Just a little personal history for me. If people don't know, I've been doing this in October. It'll be 25 years. I have been a firearms instructor most of that time, so I've had to be in the realm of understanding use of force and understanding use of force and the ramifications of it and the training of it. And Officer Davidson, when he gets up to give you his kind of biography on that. But first, what's, what's, what's use of force? Use of force is for law enforcement is when we have to affect arrests and the things we have to do to affect that arrest. There's some other circumstances too, or we might use force, but the main uses of force are, are during an arrest situation or to resolve a problem that we're called to. So just to start with some of the training, recruits and veterans get training from DPSST, which is the Oregon Police Academy. We have, our guidelines are our policies from our departments and our department training and training we get from other agencies and other sources. We're very lucky here. Officer Davidson, as I said before, I'm a firearms instructor. Officer Davidson is a firearms instructor and a defensive tactics instructor. So he is the one for us that teaches the control moves and use of force and the hands-on type stuff. We're also very lucky, Wyman National Forest, their law enforcement, law enforcement officer Spearbrecker is also a defensive tactics instructor. And we, over the years, have got a lot of, Officer Davidson and Officer Spearbrecker worked together a lot to give us our training. And so we get the federal side that Officer Spearbrecker has and the state side that Officer Davidson has. So a little history, as we are today, how law enforcement is ruled by use of force is a US Supreme Court from 1989 called Graham versus Connor. And what it is about is it is a case that basically set the rules for use of force that we live under currently. And I'll just give you some quick definitions that the Graham versus Connor decision from the Supreme Court was basically the reasonableness of a particular use of force must be judged from the perspective of a reasonable officer on the scene rather than with 2020 wisdom of hindsight. So in layman's terms for me, that the court at that time decided that when a citizen makes a complaint of excessive use of force, the courts are to look at it through the eyes of the officer. They're not to look at it through the eyes of a third party or even per se the victim. It's, it's through the eyes of a reasonable officer, any, any reasonable officer. And there's kind of a three-pronged part of Graham versus Connor in that there's three factors. And one of the factors is severity of crime. The second factor is whether suspects pose an immediate threat to the safety of officers or others. And the third prong is whether a suspect is actively resisting arrests or attempting to escape. So those are all the pieces that the court would look at in a civil trial for excessive use of force. And it's very similar to how we train use of force and how we would look at a use of force complaint. And since I have been chief of Oak Ridge, I believe we've had two use of force complaints that were official complaints. And one was actually filed as a tort claim. And so our insurance company investigated that. And they deemed it was reasonable force and they were not going to pay the subject any money in a settlement. And that they were willing to go to court if the subject continued with that and felt that they could win that. We had another internal affairs investigation where an officer, it was suspected of use of force, that officer resigned before disciplinary hearing. So in that case, that officer resigned. There were some other issues, not just the use of force. I really can't go into it anymore than that, but we did have a complaint that was neither really sustained as, as a excessive use of force or unfounded as a not excessive use of force because the officer resigned before disciplinary hearing. So how our policies work, we didn't get to the discipline of the full part. So it's that, that, that would be kind of one that was up on the air because it would be a union thing and our city attorneys and our insurance company altogether working on a case like that. So, and as far as complaints go, if there was an excessive force complaint, that would basically come to Sergeant McPherson. In our policies, the sergeant investigates our internal affairs complaints. And then she could assign an internal investigator or external investigator. And then the investigation would be completed and presented to me for discipline. To the question of how do we know we don't use excessive force? We have we, we actually don't call it use of force as far as our reports are concerned. We call it officer response to subject resistance and aggression. And so anytime there's a use of force or the response to aggression, there's a form filled out that's actually separate from the police report. It kind of goes over, it goes over officer actions, the subject's actions, what happened, what didn't happen, if there was injury to the subject, if there's injury to the officer. And that documents all that. One thing we've done to that report is we've added a beginning part of the report. Whereas if I was to go arrest someone and they were completely compliant, that report would stop right there, if that makes sense. So how that makes is a data stream where it can say Chief Martin in 2019 arrested 20 people. He only had to use force one time. So we have that documentation that shows as like a risk management piece, the documentation that shows, yes, there was this many arrests, but only one time force had to be used or what the level of force was. And then there's a lot of buzzwords going around, around right now from a lot of people. But there's kind of a difference between use of force and physical force. Because there's times when we have to use physical force, but it can be deemed that just us responding to in a call is force, which would be called officer presence. And then also force would be verbal commands. If I give you verbal commands and you comply to them, I'm good, I can be giving you forceful verbal commands, but you comply with them. Instance would be if I'm making arrests and I say, Rick Zilstra, turn around and put your hands behind your back. You're under arrest. And Rick turns around and puts his hands behind his back and complies to the, the rest. And then it could go from there where people passively resist, where they just do the, no, I don't want to go to jail. I'm just going to stand here, but they're not assaulting us. And then there's times when people actively resist, whether they try to escape or they actually try to assault us. And I'll have Officer Davidson go into some of the more details with what our responses are to force and some of our training. With that, I will turn it over to him to kind of talk about that.
So I'm Steve Davidson. I'm in charge of the defensive tactics for Oak Ridge Police Department. And one of the things with defensive tactics is it's police use of, to explain it, it's police use of violence. Okay? We put people in shackles and lock them in a cage against their will. Some people don't like that. The point of police violence would be they're trying to hurt me. So in order to overcome them, I have to hurt them more and faster. The way we train here is I, I care about the people that I train. I want them to not get hurt. I don't want them injured. I don't want them killed. I also don't want them sued, fired or imprisoned. So there's this delicate balance. So what do we do? We focus on Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu here. It's very effective. It doesn't require natural body strength that some, you know, that say boxing would. We also do that for fun with our friends. There's a very low likelihood of injury with Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu. I've, I've done it my entire adult life and I'm old. So the one of the things that, that there's a, obviously these are pretty strange times for police. It is, it's very difficult, or I'll say impossible, to use violence effectively and have it look good. It looks bad. It looks terrible when you see it on video. Everybody's seen hundreds of cases of police violence on TV, but they were fake. In real life, it looks like a fight. It looks violent. It looks like an assault. We have low instance of it. How we assure that we have low instance of it is we go through a painstaking process to hire people that are of good moral character that aren't going to, that aren't here to try to hurt other people and don't want to hurt other people. So we're in an agency our size, we don't really deal with the evils of, not so often, the evils of somebody who becomes a police officer with bad intent because they would stick out and we would notice right away. Here, what we, what it would be is it would be a training issue if that were to ever come up. And so I, from my experience with, when you take people of good moral character that don't want to hurt people, my problem as an instructor is not trying to keep them back from hurting people. It's trying to get them to do it because they don't want to hurt people. So I actually have to kind of ramp them up a little bit because they have a tendency not to engage. Recruits in general have a tendency not to engage when they should. And we want to make sure that they're safe. So what we work on is, is, you know, safe ways to do, ways to do it that are safe for the officer and safe for the suspect. And is there something else you wanted me to touch on?
No, they can ask questions. And I can take over for Officer Davis there. One of the, in the, since I've been here, we've shared a training with Coburn PD. And it's a hands-on training that it's called Milo. And what it is, it's a video scenarios or shot up on a video screen. And we have to react to the scenarios. And the instructor behind us that's working the machine, they can actually change the scenario. So if you're doing a good job and you're being in control, they can make the scenario come out like the example I gave with arresting Rick Zilstra where he complied and turned up his hands behind his back. And so the use of force tools that we have for that training is we have, there's a pepper spray device that activates on the screen. There's a taser that activates on the screen and there's a firearm that activates on the screen. There's actually impact weapons that do, but for whatever reason, they don't ever work. So CJ, she's, she's supposed to buy some new equipment. It's a little better. But it's, I, I can't explain. Hopefully one of these times, we usually have it Coburn, we share, but I've been working with the chief to bring it up here. And some of you counselors and the mayor or other city staff could go through, through that. And, and you can kind of see, see how does it, basically it puts you in a call. And you have to respond to the, to the subjects on the screen and you also have to, the instructor can influence it how you act and how you're acting. So if you have an officer that's not controlling the scene, the, the instructor can up what the subject's doing or they can lower what the subject's doing if you gain control again. So it's a really good tool. When we have it up here sometime, I hope some of you go through it because it will really give you an understanding of, of some of the calls you go to and, and how to respond to those things. And one of the biggest things with, with use of force in my career, lots changed. But the one philosophy I've always had as a law enforcement officer is we have to use violence sometimes, but we have to use violence without anger. That would be the simplest term I could give for an appropriate use of force as a law enforcement officer is yes, we have to use violence or force sometimes. But we have to use it without, without anger or malice. Which as Officer David said, sometimes that's hard to teach new recruits or people that get into our profession that are timid. And that's where I worry sometimes where people that, that don't engage enough can get injured because they, they don't take the appropriate actions when they should. And sometimes I've seen nationwide, I think sometimes the officers, instead of going in and controlling a situation, they, they don't. And that's that fine line between our de-escalation techniques and then just getting, getting the job done is that the, the hardest part for law enforcement, especially in the days we live in now, is when to take action and when to not take action, I guess I would say. And then so yeah. A good thing we could do is any of the counselors that want to come talk to Officer Davidson or I offline? We can go through some policies and they can kind of see what some of our forms are. And we can kind of give them a rundown. One thing I'd also say is we have a lot going on in the US with the West Coast and Oregon and Washington, and particularly we're very far ahead of the curve of policies, procedures, training than a lot of the parts of the country are. We're kind of known for that. I think our folks all do a good job. I'm proud of them. It's a hard time for us, but again, it's, it's, they have a different job. Aside from the use of force stuff, they have a different job where we go and get yelled at all the time. So we really could talk about this for hours because we're both instructors for years and it's hard to get out all the ambiance of it because there's so, there's so much. Every day we, we, we deal with stuff and stuff changes and we have to react to it. And so again, if people want to talk offline, but I'd say the biggest answer to Counselor Maxfield's question is, is we have forms and reports. We analyze those forms of reports. Training and then the after action of the forms and reports and analyzing this is how I know as a chief that we don't use excessive force. So. And if you're a law enforcement officer and you've worked many years, you are going to get those complaints. You, as some counselors, probably especially the council president, the mayor, there's going to be times where you're going to be, tort claims are going to be filed on you because something your police officers did. Whether they did a good job and someone was just trying to get some money or they did a bad job. But there's going to be times as politicians where you could run into that. And if anybody wants to talk about that, I can also explain that process to them. We haven't had any tort claims for a while, so I'm not saying we'll never have again. One again, I'm sure we will. You could get tort claims from your other departments too. So with that, Steve had one more thing. And then if you had any questions, because we don't, we could keep you here all night and I don't want to do that. So.
I just wanted to expand on something that the chief said about us being ahead of the curve. There's a, there's a lot of policy change, changes going on in other states and most of those don't affect us, wouldn't affect us at all, such as banning chokeholds. We already talked to chokeholds. As far as placing knees on necks, we already don't do that. As far as, I believe it was Atlanta last night said they're going to the objective, objectively reasonable officer standard for use of force. We've always done that. So it, they're, the rest of the country is kind of catching up with us actually. So that's all I wanted to add.
So thank you guys for coming here and giving this presentation. And I know Counselor Maxfield initiated this, so I'd like to make sure she has an opportunity to ask any questions. My question would be is how often do you find yourself in a position that you have to actually engage in a, physically with a suspect?
Anecdotally, off the top of my head, I'd say about once a month.
Okay.
And, and that, that, that can range, for me, that can range from everything is just grabbing somebody and controlling them to put handcuffs on them. Because, and sometimes that stops it right there. They're going to try to get away and you grab a hold of them and you get cuffs on them fast. And it, or it could be someone full, full out resists arrest. So. Most, I can think of all of, just about all of our use of forces have been a result of an arrest. So we don't have too many other situations where we deal with that here. And a lot of the times for the stuff where the, I mean, there's a lot of stuff about tear gas and stuff like that. We don't have that training. We don't really have that equipment. That's, we would call another agency to, to help us with that. So.
To do that. Counselor Maxfield, I will open the mic to you.
Yeah. Well, thank you both for, you know, helping to inform us. Obviously we don't work in that field, so we appreciate it. And also thank you for sending over that training. It looks like I do have a meeting conflict for the use of force ones. I'm hoping, I registered, so I'm hoping that they send me the recording. And I have two thoughts here and one is two parts. So is there, in the same way that like in a combat zone like Afghanistan, is there an escalation of force policy that, that exists for, for you guys?
There's, there's, I wouldn't say there's an escalation of force policy, but we have a lot of training in de-escalation. And the best example I can give for that is back to the, sometimes we have to use force, but we have to use it without anger is when there's, when the subject's using this much force, we have to use this much force. When the subject comes back down here, we need to come back down. And then, then it can go up and down in the situation where we're, we're making the assist and there's actually someone really resisting or trying to assault us. The, that, that would be my best explanation. And that would be the de-escalation part is we, we have to come down with the subjects. And then we have to go back up or back down. That's, that's our, that's what we legally have to do and responsibly have to do is, is you have to be able to control your emotions and come back down, even though you might've got punched in the face or kicked in the, Officer David's been kicking in the testicles since he's been here. And you still have to professionally maintain yourself and affect an arrest with that up and down escalation, de-escalation.
So with that in mind, obviously every community is going to have their, their mental health cases. Do you guys take special training for dealing with folks with mental health issues?
Yeah, DPSST, I can go back to that. DPSST requires us, they don't require us to take enough. And we've done some analyzing of that, what other agencies do too. And it's pretty much the same as what we do. It's so many hours every three years. And then our use of force is a minimum of eight hours per year. And so in our certifications, we have a yearly thing, so many hours of stuff we have to get yearly. And then there's three-year cycles that we have to get so many hours in three years as well.
Okay. And so then, uh, another training question. I know our community isn't the most diverse, but do you guys take implicit bias training?
Yes.
That's all my questions.
Good question.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Mayor Holston, this is Bobby.
Go ahead.
I, I don't have a question, but I have a son sitting here asking questions in my ear. Would it be all right if you asked one of his questions?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So this is directed towards the officers. So how do you like reach out to the communities that like you mainly police? Like, how, because like, I know there's like. When you're in that community, you get the information from the people. And it's like, let's say they did some drug bust or something, all they're going to hear is, oh, police are bad. How they reach out and inform those communities, like make a connection. So like, they can actually grow the community into a good place and not make it so bad.
It's a good question. Chief, can you answer that?
I can answer how I feel about it.
Okay.
Uh, I live in this community. My wife works in this community. My kids were born in this community. I want to see the best committee it can be. And part of that, there's always been the buzzword, I don't know if you've all heard, the, you know, community policing. But to me, that's a fallacy for small agencies because we do that. Even if a small community doesn't want to do that, they have to because it's, it's, you live, you work, especially in rural areas like we are. And that's mostly worked in rural areas. That's why I like working in rural areas because. Good, bad, and different. I know your guys' names, know some of your guys' good stuff you got, and I know some of your drama as a, as a police chief assault. And that's also keeping the professionalism of keeping. People's drama. Within our agency and not putting it out. That's also part of being a small town police officers is, it's the good and bad of it, and it's a responsibility that we have. I, I'd say the big. You've rode with me, buddy. And you helped deliver, uh, stuff during Snowpocalypse. So I can say he helped us during Snowpocalypse and deliver baby food with me. So. That's, that's my best explanation of that.
Well, thank you guys so much for, um, for taking the time to, um, do some explanations. Counsel, do you have any further questions before we thank them and move on? Okay. All right. Good job, guys. I'm very proud of our police force. I say that all the time to the citizens that I, that I interact with. And give you a good thumbs up. I think you do a great job. Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on then to fire department update.
Yes, ma'am. I'll be very brief. Uh, we're kind of running a little behind, but, uh, so we've got, uh, I've got 11 volunteer interviews scheduled for Monday night. It's great. Uh, some qualified folks that, I mean, already come with qualifications and others that want to get them. So that's great. We've got two grants that have been submitted, both for, that's to, uh, higher additional, uh. Firemen and paramedics. And we've got one more, uh, grant that we're working on for, uh, to replace the generator there. Um, for the month of May, uh, it was a total of, uh, 60 calls. Uh, our, our transport rate was 62% and of those calls. Uh, 41 came from in Oak Ridge and the rest were in the outlying areas. So that's all I have for the fire department.
Thank you so much. Um, and do you also have a brief public works update? Rick?
Yes, um, public works. So for last month, month of May, Public Works just attributed nineteen. Nineteen million nine, nine hundred and forty thousand gallons of water. Sorry, sorry, that kind of spit that out. Treated twelve million six hundred and seventy-three gallons of wastewater. Public Works did 21 service orders. Two water leaks. One of them was a four-inch hydrant on Simpson Drive and a two-inch service line on Fern Street. There was one wastewater repair at Green Waters Park and 17 locates. Other tasks performed were mowing and brushing. Removal is at its peak and it seems to be growing faster than we could cut it. Bathroom, bathrooms at parks are open, open back up. COVID-19 cleaning averages about five hours a week. Uh, street maintenance, park maintenance and alley maintenance is being done. Um, monthly reading of meters. Prepped lot 37 for gutter installation and fence install. Uh, both jobs should be done in mid-June and prepped irrigation systems for summer use if summer ever decides to show up and it looks like it did today. So that's our public works report. If there's any questions.
Good job. Thank you. Um, no other questions, um, from me. Counsel, do you have any questions?
I just have this statement. I just, um, want to take the time to thank Rick for everything that he has done, um, both personally and professionally. For Oak Ridge. It's, um. To me, very sad to see that, um, unfortunately, he's not going to be a city staff anymore. So I just want to thank him very sincerely for all of his work. And. I know he cares very much about Oak Ridge. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
I agree. I, I agree. Um, I have appreciated working with him both as a counselor and now as mayor. Um, he's always been forthright and competent. And, um, I, I just, you know, because I am old, I get to say this to you. I just have seen you grow up so much. And though I didn't know you when you were young, watching you over the past few years, you just, um, you have really, uh. Found your, you found your footing and, um, I'm excited to see where you go from here. So.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I agree with that, but I also have a quick question for Rick. Um, what's your status on Greenwater Park building?
Um, Belfour was back in there starting yesterday morning.
Yay. So is there intention then to finish it?
Yep. Yep. And they brought a brand-new crew in, uh, started yesterday morning. I checked on them when they got there yesterday, just had a chat with them. And then went in this morning and looked and it looks like they are making progress. The, the quality work is definitely better than I've seen so far. Um, they have, I guess, at least a couple more days worth of work in there.
Okay.
So.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, let's move on to, uh, community services update. This is a right-of-way issue?
Yes. This, um, 10.6.1, you all received the additional packet. Dawn and Brenda Christman have the Henderson, sorry, have decided to offer a, a small portion of their property to be added to the city right of way. At an intersection of Seventh and Hialeah Drive. It's a very small portion at just point zero. Twelve of an acre and it'll correct a southern alignment of the existing right-of-way adjacent to the property. You all have the, the maps. I, I'm hoping, because the maps really help explain what's going on. But in order for somebody to offer up property to a municipality or county or state. That agency must be willing to accept it to make it a legal, uh. Gift or transaction, whichever way you want to put it. And that's what we're here today to do is to ask you guys to accept this small piece. So that we could correct our southern alignment of that intersection.
Excellent. Excellent. Counsel, can we have a motion so that we can get some discussion and approval or denial?
Sorry, I was looking for the, uh. Uh, okay, so I move we accept the point zero one two acres dedicated by Mr. And Mrs. Henderson to correct the alignment of right-of-way. At the northerly position of map tax lot 21 dash three five dash 16 dash 12 dash zero three four zero zero.
We hear a second. All second. That was Bobby who seconded. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions or discussion? Rick, I only have one question. Is this, um, is, will this, is there any reason why the city shouldn't accept this ROW?
No, there's no reason we should not. Um, in fact, I highly recommend that we do. It could be many years before that road is ever developed. But in the current situation it's in, we would have to get creative in developing a really good intersection there. Because right now it's a one-way. One-lane, four-way intersection. If it was ever developed into a two-lane, four-way intersection, we would have issues.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions, Counsel?
I have a question. I wondered if, um, if anyone could tell me why this was considered an urgent matter for the.
This has to be accepted before, uh, Mr. Henderson could actually submit the, um, the new plat. So.
Oh, so it's benefiting him to, to do something with his property?
No, he just can't finish his paperwork on his, on this, uh, partition until this is, until this is done because this is a small piece of a. Larger partition that he was approved of in May of 2017.
Oh. Okay. Any other questions, Counsel? Jackie, call for a vote.
Counselor Hollitt? Hi. Counselor Whitney?
Hi.
Counselor McClelland?
Hi.
Mayor Holston?
Hi.
Counselor Maxfield?
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon?
Hi.
That passes unanimously. Thank you, Counsel. Um, and please, please sure and thank the Hendersons for us also.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's move on then. Um, let's see, we step 11, we have no public hearings.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, yes.
I do need to, uh, finish community services.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
No problem. Um, so for the month that I would be reporting on for the planning, we did not have a planning meeting because of COVID. And then, um. For the last month, we had the OIP rezone meeting, which was scheduled for, to come to planning or to city council, the first meeting of next month. Um, but that meeting was canceled, so I need to officially ask when you guys would like to see that meeting. I do not recommend doing it on the 16th of July because that's already a TSP.
Right.
Um, so I'm asking if you guys would be willing to take a look at the calendar with me and schedule the OIP rezone consideration for city council.
Um, so are you asking if we can put it on the first, um, meeting in August?
That would be preferred, yes.
Okay.
That's what I would prefer to do.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that too, Counsel. Is there any objection? Okay. Go forth.
August 6th it is. And this is one of the type of meetings where we have to have a 20-day lead time notice to the neighbors. So that's one of the reasons I wanted to verify. So yes, thank you. So August 6th.
Thank you.
And that is it for, for me.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, um, let's see, I will move on then to, um, this supplemental budget. Number 13. Brian?
Yep, uh, 13.1. It's a resolution, uh, 08, uh, 2020. And we're looking for a motion before to approve. Um, I'll just hand it over to Bill because he's got the details.
Um, Mayor, before we proceed.
Yes.
I just need to, um, say I have a conflict of interest. I'm on up to state.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
All right, thank you. So this is a resolution to adopt a supplemental budget under ORS 294.471, which is outlined in the, uh, in your packet. In terms of applicability of that, uh. Items A, B, D, and H, one or more of those items. Uh, for the purposes of having a supplemental budget applies to the items that are included in this, uh, in this supplemental budget. And, uh, also just mention that, uh, since none of these, uh, items affect appropriations, total appropriations in any of the funds by more than 10%. We are not required to have a public hearing on that. The council can adopt a supplemental budget at a regular meeting of council. So, um. Going through the, the items here, um, I can read them over or I can just answer any questions you might have if you have any question in regard to. The nature of these items or why we're proposing a supplemental budget for these items.
Let's just move to questions. Counsel, do you have any questions about any of these items that are delineated in our agenda bill? I'm in this.
Questions?
Is that, uh, is that a no or is that a, I need more time?
No, I have no questions.
Okay.
I understand it. I have no questions.
Dawn, thank you.
Leave me here if I did.
I know I would. I was waiting for you. All right. Can I have a motion? Is there, go ahead, Bill.
I'm sorry, uh, didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's fine.
As I've mentioned in my earlier comments, uh, the majority of these items, uh, will address some of the, uh, small issues we have with a few, a few places where we're, we might be over our appropriations a little bit. This increases those appropriations. So we won't be over our budget appropriations and also transfer some cash, uh, between funds, uh, to hopefully prevent any. Overdrafts or cash deficits in those funds as well as preventing the, uh, problems with, uh, the fund balance being negative at the end of the year.
Right. Excellent. Counsel, can I have a motion?
I move we adopt the supplemental budget.
Counselor Hollitt?
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. They, simultaneous question here. Go ahead, Chrissy.
I just wanted to, wanted to, um, identify a actual conflict and I will not be voting on the supplemental as well. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Uh, Jackie, does that leave us with enough votes, enough to have a quorum?
That leaves you with four people?
Yes.
Yes. So we just barely have a quorum.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Um, all right, let's go ahead and have a motion.
I move we adopt the supplemental budget for the fiscal year 2019, 2020, contained in resolution 08, 2020.
I second.
Seconded by Counsel Kenyon. Any other discussion? No discussion? Please call for a vote, Jackie.
Counselor Maxfield?
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon?
Hi.
Mayor Holston?
Hi.
Counselor McClelland?
Hi.
That passes. Thank you, Counsel. Appreciate that. And thank you, Bill.
Welcome. I would just like to say that, uh, how much I've enjoyed working with all of you. This probably won't be the last time I, I see you, but, uh, and I certainly will see some of you. Out in town, but, uh, I do want to mention that I enjoyed working with you and, uh, it's been a, it's been a, uh, good experience.
Good.
All the members of the council and the committees and, and, uh, the administration. And I'd like to thank Brian for all his, uh, support. As well as Rick and all the other staff folks.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, let's move on to, um. Uh, let's see, at this point, I will, um, I'm going to hold on public comment until after we have our executive session. And so at this point, we are moving into executive session per ORS 192.6602H. To consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to our current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. And ORS 192.6602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. At this time, everyone who is not a member of the council will be, um, put into the waiting room, I believe, Brian?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, please proceed. So, um, having concluded our executive session, there is no further business of the council. I do want to move into public comment. Is there any public that would like to make a comment? And, nope, I don't see anybody waving. Is there anybody in the whack that is, have a hand raised?
No one here, ma'am.
All right. Well, with that, um, it is now, I have no idea what time it is, 9:37 and this meeting.
Oh, Kathy?
Yes, Dawn?
I thought of one more question I wanted to ask Rick.
Yes.
As our community services person or, um. Public Works more so on this one. Um. I know that we don't have that seventh well, but I'm wondering if our tank that's up on the hill is actually working and running?
Yes, it's been, it's been working, running for quite some time.
Yep.
Okay.
Something as it should, as it was designed, yeah.
So do you think that we don't need another well or we still need another well?
Uh. I think that another well would probably be best, especially the age of our wells. Uh, the production of well number four is very low. Uh, during our summer months, we do draw down our, uh, well field quite a bit. Um, and that's, it's not so much a, a storage issue as of being able to pull it out of the ground issue. When we get low or, or when the reservoir gets the, I'm sorry, when aquifer gets low, uh, the, that's when we have issues. When we get low or when the reservoir gets, I'm sorry, when aquifer gets low, the, that's when we have issues. But this is CA, in my mind, the more pressing priority is the continued refurbishment of well number two because the out there is so high, could be so high. Great, great.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everyone, thank you for being here, good evening, have a good night's sleep. This meeting is adjourned. Good night. Good night, everybody.